Okay, I would like to call the Tuesday, July 10th, 2012 meeting of the Planning Board to order. To my right is Mike Batista and Chuck Clark. I'm Sammy Baghdadi, the Chair. To my left, Joe DiStefano, Board of Liaison. To the Planning Board, Andy Rojas and our staff, Jeff Wheeler. I'd also introduce our peer review consultant who's here, Steve Hyken. First order, the Woodlands at Belmont Hill, request to reduce road surety bond amount. Jeffrey, can you give us a quick report? And if the applicant can also be prepared to talk?
Yes. The Northlands, which is the residential company that is building the Woodlands in Belmont Hill, has requested that the bond to build the roadway up there be reduced. It has to be renewed, and because they've done so much construction of the roadway already, they figured why not reduce it to a more reasonable amount, or amount that would be necessary to complete the work that needs to be done. Ara Yogurtian and myself went on a site visit last Tuesday and met with the project manager, site manager for Woodlands, and walked around and looked at the different roadways. And Ara recommended that the bond amount should be $150,000. The South Cottage Road, which is the Zone 2, is when you go into McLean Hospital, it's on the right. The South Cottage 2 is what gets you to access that Zone 2. That road, the entire roadway, needs to be top coated, finished top coat, and then a portion of, a branch off of that, needs to be constructed. So Ara felt that $150,000 would cover both of those aspects. Went back and spoke with the representative from Woodlands, and they have recalculated, if you will, their numbers, and also have submitted a revised spreadsheet to show that $150 is fine with them as well.
Okay. And Ara Yogurtian, in his capacity as town engineer, made that determination and assessment.
Correct. He's in charge of all the road construction in town.
Okay.
So he's, I would say, pretty experienced in determining what things will, what road work costs.
Sure. And there's someone here on behalf of Northland?
Sure.
But you have to speak into a mic.
Keith Moore, Director of Construction for Northland. And yeah, not to reiterate exactly what Mr. Wheeler said, but we had the original road bond, which was created back in 2007, of which we did 50% of the roadwork to get us going, and had a very tough real estate cycle, and didn't build a lot of homes in '08, '09, and really '10. We kind of started up a little bit. So basically, the end of '10 and 2011, we got going and have, you know, on our, at our standpoint, probably about 90% of the roadwork done and in place. My original proposal was to reduce the road bond to $75,000, $76,000. And I was looking at it from the schedule of values that we had established back in '07 compared to the work that's done. I believe, you know, Ara and Jeffrey pretty much agreed with it, but it was the fact that today's numbers, the same as, you know, yesterday's numbers, and felt a little better if, you know, we were a little bit more conservative, and if anything happened, to make sure there was enough money to finish up top coat in sidewalks and curbs and whatnot, which we were fine with. We just, we're taking the approach that, you know, now most of the road is done, and that, you know, sales have been, you know, positive for us in the past year, so we hope that we'll, you know, try to wrap up in the next year and a half, so.
Okay. Very good. Any questions from members of the board? Yes?
I have some questions. Are the utilities in the stretch of road that has yet to be built?
Yes, they are. All the water has been approved by the Water Department. Sewer is in, drainage is in, all of the roadwork, electrical, phone, cable, handholds, pullboxes, and all the way down. And the gravel, all the subgrade and gravel is completely in place. There is that last section of, with the last two buildings, that does not have a binder down, and we plan on doing that basically in September. We didn't, just wanted to wait for the heat to pass a little bit, so.
And the services are into all the buildings, all the areas?
They are. Yep, 100%, all the way up to the building that we're currently doing right now. Yep. And the two buildings that are not in place yet, the services are tapped into the main and brought to about 10 feet from where the foundation is going to be.
I was under the impression, looking at the sketch, that the utilities weren't in yet, and I was thinking it was an awfully low number to complete all that.
Okay, good point. Any other questions? Okay, then do I hear a motion to reduce the amount of the surety bond at the Woodlands at Belmont Hill project to $150,000?
I'll make a motion that we reduce the surety bond for the Woodlands to $150,000.
Okay. Second? I'll second it.
So can I end the discussion? Can I just ask one question?
Yes, please.
That's what I was waiting for.
Okay.
Time frame to complete it, because obviously, the idea of this bond is to make sure that you do get it done in a reasonable amount of time. When do you think that whole road will be finished bound and then binder and finished at the other end?
The last 250 feet of binder cost of asphalt to go on, we're expecting, we're ready to do it right now, but we're just waiting for the heat, so we're going to call it, call it day-to-day. Right at that point, we, there was, you know, three months ago, there was piles of fill-in construction debris and all of that stuff in the way, which couldn't happen. We used the last few weeks to move all that stuff, and it is fully drivable now, and we have it, you know, in a sense. So, and then the final top coat of the road, we'd love to say we're going to do it this year, November, right before the plans close, that's our goal. And I know our homeowners are upset with that as well, you know, so, but, so, just want to try to get as much of the equipment off, and, you know, so that we don't have any risk of damage.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Okay. Done. Thank you. Okay. I am going to skip around on the agenda, because we will be losing Joe DiStefano in a few minutes as we take up the Cushing Village project. So I'm going to jump down to election of Planning Board officers. Usually, we hold our organizational meeting at our first meeting in July, which is right after the beginning of the fiscal year, and usually, right after all appointments to the Planning Board have been made. In this case, we are lacking one member, and it's anticipated that the Board of Selectmen will, in the next week or so, fill that position. So I look for guidance from the board. Do you want to do our organizational meeting tonight, or does it make sense to wait until our remaining full member is sitting with us at the table?
When do we anticipate that we'll have the next full member? Will that be in a week or so, and will that be in time for our next meeting?
Hopefully, we will have a new member on the board within a week, but the next time the board will meet in full will probably be September. So, given vacations plans, given our summer schedule, it will be September.
Just a point of clarification. The Board of Selectmen, at their next meeting, which is next Monday, will be doing some more reappointments. The filling of vacancies isn't scheduled to happen until the August 13th meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
So it's still before your September meeting, but we don't anticipate that any vacant position on committees or boards will be filled before the 13th.
Okay. That answers your question.
And all the existing positions will remain intact until September, whether we carry through it?
Yes. All existing, you know, the chairmanship, the secretary vice-chair, and really, committee appointments, you know, so that is something we can review at the next meeting.
Okay. And it's going to be a relatively slow time of year for us until the September meeting. We'll have one more meeting we won't meet in August. I'd sort of like to wait until we have the new member on the board and let everybody make a decision at that time.
I would agree.
Okay.
It's too close not to take advantage of the fact that we can have the new board member.
Okay. Agreed. Then what I would suggest is, you are all serving on committees, you know, as Planning Board members. If any of you are unhappy with your assignments, let me know. Email me, and I will try to reshuffle that and work on that in advance. Okay? If I don't hear from you, assume you will be where you're at. Okay. Next item, approval of minutes? Okay, we had sent, I had sent some minutes out, April 10th, morning interviews, April 10th, Planning Board meeting, April 12th, which was also morning interviews with peer review consultants, and April 17th. Any comments on those minutes?
There was a suggested revision on April 10th. We need, a copy, which is in front of you right now, and revision is highlighted in red.
Okay. And that was in response to your comment, Mike. That's fine. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 10th, 10th, 12th, and 17th?
Move.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. Joe, I think we're set to move on to Cushing Village, and we will have Carl Haglund sitting in with us.
Do we have a committee update? I just have a small update about the Housing Trust.
Sure. You can give your committee update.
Yes. This, I'm the liaison with the Housing Trust. The Housing Trust continues to have, oh, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Here we go. How's that?
The Housing Trust, the Housing Trust had some issues that were raised about the inclusionary zoning. One of the issues was, that has been raised in the committee, is if we should have formal, we should put the formal regulations in place, and that they've asked us to consider that, and my thought is that that's something that we will probably address in the fall. The second issue that also had to do with inclusionary zoning was some developments that have been built in the past, and that there were questions that were raised if inclusionary zoning should have been applied to those projects and wasn't applied to them. I know that one of the members of the committee went to Glenn Clancy and asked him, and also Jeffrey and Jay, and our understanding was that the inclusionary zoning regulations didn't apply to those projects, so we moved on from that point. And also, the Housing Trust continues to look for developable sites, so that's what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Any other committee updates while we're on this agenda item? Okay. Then with that, we can spend the rest of our evening talking about Cushing Village. Just as a guideline to people who are speaking, if you don't hear your voice amplified, then probably the mic is not close enough, and you should speak up louder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Donahue, on behalf of the applicant. We didn't get a chance, when we ended on June 26th, when we last met, to thank the board for all of its effort that evening. It was a long night. A lot was said, and we appreciate all the hard work that the board put in that time. We have had the chance since then to go back and, because so much was said during that period of time, review the tape to make sure we understood exactly what was said and the guidance we received from the board. What we left with was the following, that there was a general consensus with regard to the Highland Building, and to paraphrase, that it would have a three-story appearance on Belmont Street and a three-story appearance on Horn Road. Somewhere in between, there'd be a section that would, under the bylaw, qualify as four stories. We talked a lot about that in a conceptual fashion and some rough ideas as far as what that would look like. You asked to have some more amplification of what it looks like. We're going to present that to you this evening, so you know what we talked about that evening. We talked about the Pomona Building with regard to its interaction with Horn Road, and you gave some very specific instructions as far as maintaining as a setback for the Pomona, a line that's drawn essentially along the front of the residential properties heading out toward Common Street, proceeding at that level for about the first level and the second level, a significant or goodly amount of a setback for the third and fourth level going up in that fashion. We're prepared to do that in looking at the design and looking at what we talked about and what was talked about that evening as far as the purposes. We're going to show you, in a sense, some suggestions that maybe would make some sense that would involve an encroachment into that area. We think it's better designed. We think it actually falls more appropriate rather than size, scale, and mass under architectural, because it's not a huge amount of space, but it does square off some of it. So we're going to show it to you tonight, so you can get some feedback on that and see if it makes some sense as we go into the next iteration. With regard to the Winslow, we talked a lot about what was required from the Winslow, and we were able to articulate to you how important that half-story that we talked about, the compromise taking off the fourth and making it a three-and-a-half-story building was. There was concern expressed as to how that would interact with both the Pomona and the building on the opposite side of Williston. You asked us to go out and do some conceptual designs or schematics, so you could get an idea of what the building would look like and have a better sense as to what it is. And what we're going to present to you this evening are at least three views that Peter has already developed, as different buildings would look, that would involve that three stories. That continues to be, I think, the primary issue that we have to get by, hopefully, this evening, with regard to size, scale, and mass, and move on. So with that, I'm going to ask Peter to briefly walk through his presentation. Certainly, you've got some boards behind you also that he or Eric will refer to as part of the presentation, on particularly what the Highland looks like and some of those Winslow options, I think, are part of the keys. Peter?
Okay. I would just like to say that this is a first-time view of these plans by the Planning Board as well. We have not seen these in advance, so we may be asking some questions. And our peer review consultant just got a draft this afternoon, and so he may offer some preliminary comments. Nevertheless, Attorney Donahue had identified issues last time in his presentation, and hopefully, tonight, we can give some clear direction on those issues to allow you to work on the design over the summer. The Planning Board will not be meeting as a whole for the remainder of the summer, so that will give you a chance to work with our peer review consultant on the design and hopefully, on other matters as well.
Good evening. My name is Peter Quinn, Peter Quinn Architects in Cambridge, and I'm joined by my colleague, Eric Rodine of Line Company Architects. I'm going to just dovetail with what Mark had just said. As you know, we presented this site plan at the last hearing, and we have made some modifications to this, improvements, if you will, that we'll go into this evening, mostly, in this case, in the Horn Road area right here, and how we treated the exterior of the Winslow. As Attorney Donahue has mentioned, there were four areas that we were asked to reconsider, or we asked you to reconsider. One, of course, was the half-story on the Winslow. The other is the step-back along Horn Road, and the other two items for four in total is how we treated the three-story and four-stories step-down on the Highland Building. So I'm first going to turn to the Highland Building and pass the mic to Eric Rodine, who can explain this in a little more detail. Thank you.
I'm Eric Rodine, and I think we can all see the boards. So we're looking at the Highland. We have pushed the entire building into the hill by about 2 and 1/2 to 3 and 1/2 feet, depending on where you count. So the entire building has sunk into the hill. We have also lowered the so-called tower, if you will, by about 2 feet. In moving the building down into the hill, what that allowed us to do was to create a full three-story building facing Belmont Street with a nice green area that's cut into off of the sidewalk. The effect on the Common Street elevation, which you see up in here, is the same that we have a three-story building, excuse me, a three-story building, as you turn the corner onto Horn Road, as well as up in here, with a four-story structure pretty much in the middle. We've shifted the entrance to the Highland into this bay from where it was before, over here, and I think it actually works better on the interior to do so as well. We have a projection on the Horn Road side that we step down to a 2 and 1/2 story on the Common Street side, and it turns into a three-story as we go down, I'm sorry, as we go down the Horn Road side. And I've rendered what is in the front face of the building. We have elevations in the back, generate balconies for the top unit, as you see up in here. The setback, in this case, is 8 feet, with an additional pushback in this zone in here that translates to about 14, 15 feet. So in effect, when you're going down the sidewalk on Horn Road, you will not see the building that's up on the upper level. We've also introduced the windows to the retail store and the entrance to the retail and to the parking off of Horn Road.
So, excuse me, Eric?
Yep.
So there will be no visibility of the retail from Common Street?
The only visibility is as you're driving up Common Street, looking in, you'll obviously see the storefront. But the issue with the grade is that it does not allow an entrance at that point, so we have to travel further down Horn Road to get to it. The elevation facing West, unfortunately, we didn't have time to render, but it is drawn at the bottom here as well. And I welcome everybody to come up after, whenever, to have a closer look.
Okay. Another question. On that chart, there is a green highlighted roof, but then there's a white highlighted area. What is that?
The white highlighted area is set substantially further back, and that's why we didn't render it. It will not be seen unless you're really far away and have a longer perspective.
It's that area in the center?
Yeah, it's this piece in here, and I do have plans that will help explain that, but it's setback substantially from the front of the building.
So that's 1, 2, 3.
Chuck, mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. So that's, so that's four stories there, even though you can't see it. 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, so you got the two fours in there?
There's a four-story element in here, and in the diagrams that Peter's generated, we include that area as part of the fourth floor as a percentage. My argument is that you don't see it, unless you're way down on Belmont Street, I would imagine you'd be able to see it.
And let me ask you, what does that area house? What does that include? Just residential units?
No, it's one unit, but it's primarily the egress stair. So we can pass these out.
And it's setback substantially from the home on Common Street as well, right?
Yes. So if you go to the, I think it's the last sheet in that handout, that's the area over here. You have the egress stair and the corridor.
How many apartments do we have in this building?
Well, on the unit count, we don't really have the layouts defined yet.
How many gross square feet have you got for residential on this building?
Okay. Please talk into the mics.
So my question was, how many square feet of residential do you have in this building, even if you don't have the breakdown of the number of units?
We may have an approximate answer to that question in a minute.
Actually, they, you do, is it the same as these if we add up all these right here? Would that give us the gross rentable area?
That would give you Highland, yes.
That, for Highland, yeah.
Approximately. I think some of those need to be checked, but it's the...
Chuck, I counted about 44 units or so.
44 units. I want to know what this square footage was. Would you get about 44 units?
I would imagine the gross square footage is around 1,000 each, give or take, including, you know, that portion of the square footage, which is...
About 44,000 square feet of residential. How much, I'm just interested, because you've redone the plans here, has the livable area changed?
Just a small amount as we pushed and pulled the building, but it has not changed in the sense of substantially.
Okay. So in terms of the amount of residential space, not units, it's about the same?
It's been, yep. Hold on.
That was my only question.
Part of the difficulty in answering the question is, it depends on when you take your measurement from. If you start going back to the January filing, there's a significant reduction. So it all, when you say, "Has it been reduced?", it always, I always get worried about when you were last looking to try to calculate.
Well, how many square feet was it in January? So we got about 44,000 now, we got about 5,200 square feet of retail.
Yeah, it's, including the commercial space, it's 54,000.
54,000.
Now, and it's been about that all along. Yep. Give or take.
The units are in flux, I gather?
Yes.
Okay.
There's only about 3,000 retail, and then is the workout, fitness area.
Well, yeah, but that's retail space. So that's about 5,200. There are about 44, so, they're about 46,000, 47,000 square feet of...
Are you done with the presentation? Okay. Steve, any comments?
Well, just on the question of the number of units, in the last iteration, when we reviewed it and also made some recommended step backs, the result of that was, in our rough calculation, 41 units, but that was with an estimated mix that sort of was oriented towards relatively more ones and fewer twos. I have that... I have that. Again, this was based on the combination of the planning board's feedback and my own analysis. We had 41 units, which were 23 twos, and then 18 one- or one-plus bedroom units. So, it may be that you'll come up with a number different than 41, although I think you've added back some space that we had recommended deleting. I think the desire to push the building into the ground has a positive effect with respect to Common Street, and in fact, if you look at the building, and I mean, I think you do have some of these drawings on your PowerPoint, right, which would be more visible to more people, but the important line that I see from a design point of view is the cornice line at the second floor beyond which the mansard really becomes a roof, and that is really kind of along the same elevation as the house, just up the street. So, I think that, you know, is a successful attempt to bring the building into scale with the nearby residents. And I don't know how well it's visible, but I saw this in the handout as well. If you look at the elevation, this is looking at it from Common Street. Here's Belmont, and, you know, Common Street does continue to go up the hill, and the house that is just across Common Street, actually, if you look at that same cornice line, it's actually higher than the building, than the current proposal for the Highland. I think the downside of this, and I'm not sure I ever saw an intermediate plan, I think it's great that in the, sort of, the design revisions to this building, that this retail space has been created here, because there wasn't one initially. This was all garage. And I don't have a plan that showed the retail before the building was pushed into the ground. The elevations I have show that as garage space, but I think the downside, and I hope I don't decapitate Chuck here, is that in the earlier scheme, before the building was recessed, you might not have been able to get a doorway in here, but you could have had windows from the retail facing Common Street. And I think, while not a fatal problem, I think it is both a visibility problem, and I think it detracts from the sense that the building has a mixed use in it. The current entry to the retail, the entry was probably always going to be here. You can see the doors, but each of these windows becomes more and more sort of depressed into the ground, and then when you get around the corner, there are no windows. So, that, I think, is an unfortunate consequence of the attempt to reduce the height by a couple of feet.
But he has, excuse me, I mean, I, take a look at that. I agree with that. He's got a secondary retail use in there, which is the health club.
There's, yeah, that's another...
Yeah, that's a secondary.
Yeah, and that's, I'm not sure how public an entrance that's intended to have, you don't see that at all. You know, I don't know how that's going to be, and that's buried completely...
That doesn't, I mean, for a health club, that doesn't detract, because people...
Not necessarily, right. People will join, they'll go, and that's not visible at all. It's somewhere buried in the ground here. So, I think that the, you know, the overall massing of the building has gotten close to what was asked for. I think that the setbacks that we were asking for along Horn Road were greater than what's being provided here, although this does sort of follow a sun angle. And I think it's also very hard to read what's front and what's back in the elevations. When I saw the earlier plans, and I discussed them with Sammy this afternoon, I mean, he was wondering where this is, these windows here, and my belief is that this is way over on the other side of the building, but it's very hard. You haven't colored it, but this is probably, you know, 50 or 60 feet back, and in an elevation, it isn't done three-dimensionally. It's very hard to read.
No, it's not.
Please, through the chair, go ahead, Mr. Rodine.
We have, you're correct, over on this section in the front on Horn Road, the building in the top floor is pushed back eight feet. Let's see. Right, right over here, eight feet, okay? However, this portion over here is pushed back 15 feet, and you can see that on the plans.
I was talking about this. Where's that?
Fifteen feet back.
Oh, that's only 15 feet back, okay.
You can see it right here.
So, I mean, I know you haven't had time to sort of redo the plans, and you're still working on the units, but it's hard, it is hard to read these elevations in terms of what is where, especially at the roof, step backs. So, I think it would be useful to sort of continue this dialogue, you know, after this meeting. You know, there's time between now and the next planning board meeting on this and other aspects, but, so, you know, I think there's been improvement, but I'm concerned about the loss of visibility of the retail space, you know, both from the town's perspective and probably from the developers.
I think one of the things we can do on that retail window is we have, we have a cutback, Steve, in this corner, where we can actually get the retail to turn the corner and have a window of this size facing Common Street. So, it would be an eight-foot window, probably about six feet high. So, you at least turn the corner.
It's also a very small space. It's only 3,200 square foot space, right? So, that's like a restaurant or something, yeah. I mean, that's a relatively small space, especially since you have right across from the Pomona, you've got almost 21,000 square feet there. So, I don't see that as a tragedy.
Okay. Steve, but what you said is if they have 43 or 44 units now, your depiction had 41 units in that building, and under your depiction, if you could kind of highlight, if you can try to point out, you know, where you had, the top story was removed.
Right. Well, I have my boards from last time. I also have them, I don't know if you want to plug this in again, or I could put my boards up there. Either way, I think, put the boards up, okay.
You know what I'd suggest, Steve? If we can raise them, oh, thank you.
Just starting with the first level of units, and I guess the plans have changed. As Eric said, the entrance is over here, and so the current plans will be a bit different than this, but this is a fairly full level of residential. This is the lowest level of residential, and some of the area along Belmont Street was occupied by the sports club. This is what we were calling the third floor since that first residential level, so second level, this is basically the same as the lower level of residential. The biggest change was on the top level, and this was along with a kind of a recommendation from the planning board that there was no additional level, that the setbacks, there were sort of a band of units here, these were all deleted. So, the setback here, this is a 26-foot bay, and then it was really the full wing here was removed, and that was, this total of units was 41. So, it looks like some units have been added back here, setback, but only sort of a portion of this bay, and then a larger portion of the rear bay. That would be the difference here.
Excuse me, Steve? None of us can see. So, can you go on the other side?
Yes.
Okay. And maybe Attorney Donahue can, if you need to.
Well, the big change, the difference in this set of recommendations, which we presented at the last meeting, the lower floor is not much difference, but the setback facing Horn Road was really the deletion of the whole bay of units here, and then an entire, the full depth of the wing and the rear. So, that's 26 feet, and that's 26. It's almost, well, it's two bays versus the current plan, which has an eight-foot setback in this area, and then it drops back to 15 here. So, our count was 41 units, but, you know, depending on whether units are created as large, two-bedroom units or smaller one-bedroom units, that number could shift without changing the actual footprint, but we ended up with 41 based on our estimate.
And if you were to point to their picture, under your depiction or our depiction, what would be, what would we see or not see?
You would probably see, this is the Common Street elevation, you would see this roof being moved over to, that would be the last window you would see. This piece here would be happening over one window bay. On the west elevation, this would pretty much disappear, and so would that. You might see further back, you might see a piece of building here, but it was towards the front of the building. This is looking at it from the back. And then along Horn Road, you might see something similar, but it would be farther away. You can't really tell the difference in these elevations of how far back something is set. I guess you wouldn't see this, but you might see this, but it's setback, so you'd see something like that. Can you see it? I'm sorry.
Can I jump in here?
Yes, yes.
So, we understood all those recommendations, and we took an architectural liberty to try to make as nice of a building as we can, and it's important to understand the architecture needs to work visually from the outside and not just the mathematics of number of feet setback from the facade. And what I'm talking about is to make a complete building with a complete roof on it. The basic design of this building is a two-story building. It has a base, and it's got a two-story building of a lighter material color, and then it has a roof, and in that roof, we have dormers. That's the partie. If you cut off the roof and put back a flat roof, all of a sudden, the partie becomes different than what we're trying to present. So, if you can imagine this elevation in here, we have a complete building from end to end with a little bump out, eight-foot bump out at the end, which does come back to the flat and does respect what we're doing on the Pomona building. So, here we have a two-story building with a full roof. It's a complete building. The same is true on the back side, which is very important. If you were to bring the roof element down to the level that Steve is talking about, then we would have a one-story building with, you'd have a base, a one-story building, and then a roof as the upper level, and the size of this building warrants a bigger proportion in the mass of the building face rather than a big hat on a one-story building. So, the proportions are very important, that we allow the building to have the partie as a two-story building with a roof and a base.
Yes, Steve?
Well, I agree with Eric that this building would not look right if it had a one-story base and a mansard roof on it, but I think, and I mean, I understand what you're trying to do. I think that, given the massing kind of constraints that the planning board is asking you to live with, that the way you've solved it with the setbacks that you have provided, where you, instead of having a mansard, you have a deck with a railing, that's a compromise, probably not the ideal compromise from the point of view of making a complete building, but it does allow you to sort of meld a two-story mass that doesn't, you know, what you've done on the upper-left part of that elevation, I think, works, and if the setback is larger, it doesn't totally kind of undermine what you're trying to achieve. But I certainly would not bring the mansard down and do it at the second floor.
I think it's important, Mr. Chairman, to make sure we're clear. We've been asking Mr. Quinn to do a fair amount of work over and over again, and what we're trying to do is figure out what the envelope is. To some extent, this is around the edges of the envelope, and, you know, when he has more than 11 days with a holiday, he may actually have some other considerations that'll be played in. I'm not suggesting in any fashion this is the last look he can see of the building. The architecture, we know, is part of your review process. We have to get to that in some fashion. What you see and what Eric's talking about is what we reviewed on June 26 with you, was basically a compromised position from what had been recommended by ICAhn to what we're suggesting, which was that added about another 10 feet, and you'll see that on Slide 17 of the presentation that we had given you back on June 26. So, you know, we have responded, we're just trying to get there.
Eric, what percentage is fourth story? True, fourth story.
I think it's in your handout on one of the last pages. I believe it's, what, 37%?
So, 37%?
Or 32%?
So, about a third is fourth story?
This handout says 24%.
24% is fourth story? Not playing with definitions?
Right.
I mean, if you go...
Exactly.
First floor, which is partially underground, then second, third, and 24% is fourth?
24% is based off of the ground floor. It's diagrammed what is considered fourth floor.
Okay, and that would not be a fifth floor because of the topography, right? That would be fourth?
That's, what you see in pink right there is what you would, if you stand on the ground and you look up and measure, that would be a four-story height.
Okay. Even though I see a fourth story as we go closer to Horn Road, that's not depicted here.
It is. You see the...
Okay. So, the area I keep asking about is this?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. And then this is right up front, and then it goes to the back. Now, let me ask you, then, what would be the harm of setting this back, for example, since it's closest to the residential area?
Well, it, we can look at that. We can look at that. We have broken off the corner. We're looking at the back elevation right now. So, we have stepped, cut off the corner here, and we have cut off the corner up in here. So, there's a breakdown of the mass of the building. You know, if we extend this one more bay over here, we can work with that.
Okay. And maybe, and maybe we will look at Steve's recommendations of rather than setting back eight feet from Horn Road, you know, maybe it is closer to 15 feet or whatever you had recommended?
Well, I mean, I think it all needs to be looked at in the context of the building plan, you know, is there, to give them an arbitrary setback, you know...
Right, no, right. No, but I'm saying we may increase the setbacks.
That's the desire, to increase that setback, yeah.
Okay. Members of the board, any reaction? To me, to me, I'll give my personal reaction. To me, it's still congested. It still, it still looks four stories to me, and that's why I am trying to suggest ways or work out ways to make it look less so. I don't buy the argument that the only way you're going to get architectural improvement is to go up with the architecture, okay, which has kind of been the argument that we've been hearing. I do think that there should be ways where good architects, which you all are, you're all very good architects, can come up with a design and not make this look like a congested mass, which it appears to me. Now, maybe it's because we're not seeing 3D, and maybe that's part of the issue. That's the danger of showing a two-dimensional picture. Any other comments from members of the board? I would like to give them direction tonight, so...
For myself, I was a lot more comfortable with the ICAhn approach that we saw last time as the approach, as the recommended approach from the board.
Okay. I'm going to pick on people. Chuck?
I can't judge...
To the mic. To the mic.
I can't judge the architecture, and I can't judge the setbacks. I'm not an expert on any of those kind of things. My only concerns are to get back to the mass of the building and look at the square footage of the building and the units of the building. So, in terms of the architects, I'll leave that to the architects, to the experts on that. I do get the feeling at times, though, that when I look at this building and the iterations that have been done to the building, it reminds me of trying to put something that's too big into a small box, and it keeps coming out the sides, and you keep changing things, but it's still the same size and mass of the building, but it looks a little bit different. So you still have basically the same number of units. One day, it's 44; one day, it's, we're talking about 41 over here. The square footage is fairly much the same, I think, in terms of the residential units. So there's some sort of an architectural response, that's to be sure. But we still, we're talking about scale and mass and bulk and all of those things. I'm looking at those from the number of units and the square footage of the building. And so I see the architecture changing and moving around. I don't know if the size of the building itself is actually changing. But I'll leave that to the experts in architecture to talk about. Those are my concerns.
Okay. And Mike, any comments?
I mean, I think generally, most of the ideas are being incorporated, and I like the direction it's going. And I looked ahead at the other parts of the building, so I know what else is coming. But I think my only comment would be, on the Horn Road side, that those two-bedroom units at the top floor might have to be considered to be one-bedroom units, which would force that balcony to be deeper, you know? Not all the way back necessarily to the line of the other balcony that's set 15 feet back, but perhaps halfway back, so you could get that top level back another eight feet. Because I think that's in line with what we were talking about last week, on that Horn Road angle, that angle up there.
Okay, but the question is, are you happy with the bulk, size, mass as presented? Or are you more satisfied with the Icon approach?
I don't think it's that much different than the Icon approach at this point. I think it's very close, unless I'm missing something. I think in 3D, a lot of the changes would show up better.
Okay. Andy, do you want to weigh in at all? I mean, you've been involved in the process.
Yeah, I think that, it's, thank you, Carl. It's significantly better by lowering the first floor level closer to Belmont Street, so that it, on Belmont Street, you don't have that half-story. That's a significant improvement. I do feel that the Icon envelope is a better envelope than the envelope that we're seeing here right now. I think additional setbacks and removal of mass at the top, as shown by Icon, are a positive improvement that I think fits better with its context. So, while I like, and I think that the architects can do a fine job with either envelope to make it look good. I don't feel that we should be boxed in to an envelope, you know, with the caveat that it's good architecture. I think good architecture can be made with either envelope, and I believe that the Icon envelope is a more sensitive envelope to the entire community.
Okay, and I myself agree as well. I feel more comfortable with the Icon envelope as well, and I think that's a nice way to describe it, so...
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't describe it for me, because I don't know what it means. Because the Icon envelope has two significant components to it, one of which we talked about during the working sessions, and that's the Horn Road appearance. And last week, or June 26, Peter Quinn and I reviewed with you a compromise, which you're seeing the effect of here, as opposed to the full elimination of piece of that. That was from the working session and the peer review. Subsequently, there was a suggestion made of, to the elimination of the entire top floor. That I did not understand to be the Icon envelope. What we talked about extensively on the 26 was pulling it back in a fashion that you see that Mr. Roden has done to reduce its appearance, but there's still that top floor. So to the extent that this represented the Icon envelope, it's, that's, we spent a lot of time talking about the need to have that section when we met two weeks ago, and I understood from this board when we left, that the board was, remained open to that.
Excuse me, Senator. Good man. I don't think that the issue is, I don't think there's a conflict, Mr. Donahue, as to whether a partial fourth floor here is, you know, is, works. I think, I agree with you. Last time, we spoke about that, given the topography and the lay of the land, that a partial fourth floor is actually, makes sense. So that's not the argument. The argument, I think, is about setbacks and the difference, I should say, the difference between what your team is presenting today and what Icon was recommending in the past. What I'm describing as the Icon envelope relates to the setback on Horn Road, the setback to the neighbor on Belmont Street, and the appearance of how much is a fourth floor from Common Street. Mr. Hyken delineated that his setback was greater on Horn Road, and it would reduce the fourth floor appearance both on Common Street and would widen the Horn Road, you know, car.
But please correct me, Steve. I think the last rendering that you came with on the 26 eliminated the fourth floor. Am I right, or am I wrong?
No, I think the way it worked, with the agreement that the building could be lowered into the ground, so it didn't appear to have an extra half-story on Belmont Street, that I think the depiction that you see on the top-right drawing, there, the left-hand portion of the building, if you count the fact that there is a buried floor that includes the Health Club, et cetera, on the left-hand side of the building, there are four stories there, but you only see three. When you come around to Horn Road, the garage entrance and the retail level, which, looking at it from Common Street, are partially buried, there are four floors there, but looking at Common Street, you see three and a bit. And where they overlap in the center, you do see four floors. I think they have addressed what was being described and asked at the last planning board meeting. I think we're talking, we are talking about the edges, how much that fourth floor, well, how much of, you're actually talking about a third floor, what really looks like a third floor is reduced along the Horn Road side. There are four floors there, but when you look at it from Common, and you see it from Horn Road, because the grade is continuing to drop along Horn Road. It's not just dropping along Belmont Street. If you look at the drawing behind Mr. Donahue, the grade is continuing to drop as you go up Horn Road, so that what looks like three floors at the corner of Common and Horn, you see there's a fourth floor along Horn Road. But they have attempted to step to sort of, they've stepped back the top floor, and they're being asked to step it back some more.
And that's my point on architecture. If, if the sense is this is responsive but not responsive enough, then there's another way to become more responsive and to work on that. But that's different than the fourth story, is what I, in my mind it is. I just want to make sure, and I think that's where the board is.
And do you agree with that, then? Is that what...
I think they, I think they can go a little further to respond to the request for setbacks, primarily at this point, we're talking about the Horn Road side of the building.
The Horn Road and the rear?
And wrapping it around to the back.
Around to the, to the... Carl, are you comfortable with that?
Well, I have a more general question, and that is whether the planning board has posted enough of these images online so that the neighborhood has the opportunity to be comfortable with them. If I were sitting in the middle of the audience here tonight, I would feel like this is all new to me, and I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that approach, that we're talking about making a decision and making it right now, rather than saying, what are the most clear drawings that we could post online and give people a chance, in the company of their friends and family, to talk about these and to see the differences and to see what it's worth in terms of keeping the development moving forward, and at the same time, having the neighborhood feel like they've had a chance to understand what, I mean, let's face it, Andy and I, and I think some of the other members of the board, spend a lot of time every month looking at plans and elevations, and I don't think most of the residents of Belmont have that, and I think that puts the neighborhood, I think the neighborhood ought to have some time to catch up with that.
Okay. Then, any other?
Can I just add something?
Yeah, please.
This is kind of the classification I said. I didn't think we were, we were too far away with Icon's approach as it relates to Horn Road. And just for your benefit, I just drew what I would suggest on that side would be just deeper balconies, smaller units, which would cut off the same thing that we're talking about, I think. I mean, just to, Steve, if you get a chance, just to kind of look at that, so that I understand that that's what Icon's envelope in that corner is. Similar.
Probably somewhere in between. Right. Okay. I want to clear up my comment.
Mr. Batista's drawing is somewhere in between our scheme of last time, the current presentation. Yours is somewhere in the middle.
Okay, then, to conclude on this point, okay? What I would like to say is, I think what you're hearing from the planning board is that they are in agreement that this is moving in the right direction, but we do need some more work on the setbacks, the Horn Road setbacks, and even I would suggest that the fourth story, as it goes back towards the residents...
Third story, third story.
Is it a third story?
Yeah, third story.
Highlighted as a fourth story.
It's a fourth on that side.
Towards the residents, maybe a step back in that, in that direction, too.
Residential level.
Back in here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I can ask you, the board to turn to page 15 in the handout.
Okay. You know, excuse me. Chris, I just want to say something. Many residents have raised their hands, and I've ignored them. Okay? And so the reason why, you know, you're the applicant, I respect your right to speak, but I am trying to keep it among the professionals, because hopefully, we can give some direction without, okay, thank you. So I'm not being disrespectful. Okay.
I understand your position.
Thank you.
I'm trying to explain my position to my seventeen...
Okay, perfect. Okay.
So if I can just ask you to look at the diagram, the elevation, the gateway, if you will, into Horn Road, which I'm sure Peter's going to pull up on the screen when we get there. But it clearly shows the dialogue going on between the two buildings, the Pomona Building and the Highland Building. And the entrance is widened, and there's a geometry that respects both buildings. There's an elevation, a cornice elevation that's consistent. There's a curvature in some of the fenestration, both on the Pomona and the Highland, as you can see. There's a cutback in the roof as the roof slides back. So it's a good elevation. It's a good gateway for the Horn Road entrance. My recommendation to come to a compromise in this is to allow us to keep the Common Street elevation pretty much where it is. It's on a grid pattern right now. If we push it back two feet, we're off the grid. If we push it back 26 feet, it would be a different partie totally than what we talked about. My recommendation is allow us to keep this on that front, and we will reduce the 24-foot setback, if you will, going down Horn Road.
Eric, my reaction to that is that this is not a dialogue between equals, between these two buildings. The Highland Building should be subservient to the Pomona, and therefore, matching the cornice lines and matching the roofs does not have the priority for some of us that it does from an architectural perspective alone, because this is not, this is not a street that's surrounded by other foreign, four-story buildings. And that's why I think the dialogue is between a major building on the corner and a somewhat lesser building, rather than trying to do all this stuff with matching cornice lines, which I understand the value of, but I don't think that's called for here.
But again, the Pomona Building is further down the hill, so there, we do have a four-story building, and the cornice aligns with the three-story building at the Highland. So one is subservient to the other. One is a three-story building, and the other's a four-story building. Because of the grade.
Okay, I mean, ideally, I think what we had hoped for was kind of a pyramiding approach, you know, from the Winslow up to the Pomona, and then tempering down to the Highland. And I think, I think that's what Carl is getting at. So to match the elevations kind of reduces some of that architectural aspect. So that's something to, that's something to consider. Okay? So I think then, our direction on this building is that we're moving in the right direction. I think we need to incorporate some more of Icon's recommendations, envelope recommendations. And why don't we, by our next meeting, you know, we will have elevations and hopefully some 3D visuals, so people can really appreciate, you know? You say the fourth story's not going to be visible from Common Street. Well, hopefully, with some of the 3D depictions, we'll be able to see that. Are people comfortable with that?
Yes, I do think that to be crystal clear, okay, that Icon's recommendations for setbacks on Horn Road should be validated. That's what we want to see. The fourth floor is, you know, a partial fourth floor, we agree on. I mean, it's based on the lay of the land, there's an issue of, you know, that's the way the building lays out. But the stepping down toward Horn Road, as well as toward the abutting residence on Belmont Street, is very important, and I think we need to do a little bit more there. In general, pushing the building down into grade so that the first floor is closer to street grade is a great move. I understand Steve's comments, which is a good one, that it reduces retail visibility. I mean, you can't have everything, you know? I mean, we have to decide where we give and what's the trade-off. But I think that pushing it down to reduce apparent bulk is a good thing. So I would work on those things.
Okay. Yes. Just to clarify, what I think it relates to, and I think maybe colors, maybe colors work best. If you look to Slide 18 in your presentation, in which the so-called fourth floor is colored, what I understand is, that's essentially okay. What you want to do is have a better understanding of what it's going to appear like with more complete drawings.
Right, but we also said removing this area that's closest to the residents.
I think that's the, I thought the area was really more toward the Horn Road, moving toward the Belmont, on the area below that.
No, Eric said he could take that back.
Eric said he could.
Yeah, one more session.
All right, just that area. Okay, I got it.
This, excuse me, gentlemen, but this drawing 18, the thing is that it's showing the fourth floor against the overall footprint of the building, and what we've been talking about mostly is what we'd call the third floor.
That's why I wanted to clarify that when we, nomenclature on floors has been difficult in this building throughout. So when we talk about what we're going to be moving, it's going to be moving mostly what it is on this drawing, the beige, as opposed to the pink. Right?
Okay, well, you know what? We can give you some direction. We've marked up one of the drawings.
Great.
So we can provide that through Steve.
Everybody's circling the same area that I thought, but if you, something permanent also be careful.
Okay, yes, it's third floor residential on their plans.
Right. Okay. Did you want to move on to the Winslow, then, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, yes, let's move on.
Okay.
To the Winslow.
All right. Just to recap where we were at the Winslow, one of the recommendations that came as a combination of both Icahn's work and maybe more significantly from feedback that the planning board gave was the entire elimination of the fourth story of the Winslow, which was originally proposed. You'll remember that from the original filing in January, we had reduced the size of the building, the height of the building, and there were still concerns about that. When we met on the 26th, we asked you to keep an eye open that that's a very important part of the development and we thought that living essentially within the roof line was something that could work for the development, work for the appearance of the town. You asked us to go back and kind of show what that looks like and show what it would look like in comparison or in relation to the abutting properties. So what we have are three different visuals of what types of buildings you could do. What I would suggest we avoid is necessarily an architectural charrette over whether those are best or whether a scheme D or E would come forward. There's a time and place for that. But I think what we wanted to really give you was an idea of how we could try to meet some of the concerns from a design viewpoint while still getting that additional half-story into the roof line in a fashion that would work as a win-win and let the development proceed. This is probably the most significant issue left on the table for the development. So let me have Peter walk through his designs if I could.
I'm going to start with what we're most familiar with, which is if we reduce the mass of the building between the three peaks that we have already generated in the original design such that we have about a 59% footprint of that top level, that half-story in relationship to the third floor, which is, we're trying to keep with the definition of a half-story for what it's worth in the town's bylaw. Half-story is 60% or less of the floor below. So what we're trying to do here is to show you a scheme in which if we kept the original design and we took out all the stuff in the middle between these peaks and just had a connector where the elevator and stairways are, and we'd be tucking units under those, under those peaks. So we'd have six units up there. This would constitute a 59% footprint and would give us the original design that we have and I think a lot of people like. Also showing in this image, the 181, I think it is, Trappello Road or 118, which is the two-story structure that was obviously permitted under the old zoning. This is about a 26 to 29-foot-high building by our measurements, so it's clearly a two-story, although it is in the same zone as, the same overlay district as our site is. So in theory, it could become a higher building at some point in the future. In any case, what we are trying to do here is to show, you know, that on one end of this building, we could have an intermediate volume and then step up to a larger volume. Now, we understand that this building presents problems in how quickly it rises to the highest level and we wanted to show you some other ideas that we had that might be more acceptable. So this one, we're going to call the schoolhouse scheme or Scheme B. What we've done here is just kept basically a three-story volume with a lower mass on the end facing the Williston Building. And then the attic level, clearly completely under the roof, is where we've put some units. Again, this is about a 56% footprint of the third floor. And by bringing the roof slope down as far as possible, we create an effect of a lower cornice line, which is important architecturally, and make the building mass appear much less imposing than the original scheme. You can see these are some elevational ideas, using a lot of the same vocabulary as the original design, but also making it more like a schoolhouse in terms of how the windows are clustered and the like. And these are the dormers up on the top level that would just pop through the roof to make a top level. And those only show up on the front side facing Trappello and the backside of the building. They're not on the Williston side. Third scheme that we're quite excited about actually is one in which we take the mass of the half-story and push it toward the Pomona as much as possible. The advantage of this is that we put it where it belongs in the sense that we have a pyramiding effect, which I'll show you more clearly in the next slide, going from a two-story to a two-story to a three-story to a three and a half, and then meeting the four-story of the Pomona further down. So this gives you an idea of the massing. We're using a low slope, kind of an aesthetic here of an old depot building with brackets and a long overhang. Next slide will give you an idea of what that looks like. So using sheds off the rear, off the sides, this is in the public parking area, this is on Williston, and then this is a three-story effect here. You can see how this shows up. So we, of course, the building across the street, this being Williston right in here, the building across the street is two-story. We have a two-story, a three-story, a three and a half. We step down in this public parking, special events plaza to a three-story and then it goes back up to the Pomona. So this building, I think, actually offers a lot of opportunity for a way to get that half-story without, and at the same time, make Williston work better all around. I know this, this is a very quick sketch, there's a lot of things with windows and the like to work out on this thing and there's a little bit of freehand drawing here, so things got a little crooked. But, you know, I think you get the idea that, how we would treat that. Before I go on to the next issue, are there any questions on this?
Have you finished your presentation on the Winslow?
On the Winslow, yeah.
Okay. Steve, any comment?
Well, I do know that there was fairly strong direction or desire from the planning board to not entertain a fourth floor in this building. And, you know, I think that's more of a contextual decision than anything else. It's also certainly within the purview of the planning board to agree to anything over two stories, you know, including three, let alone four. I think Peter has tried hard to find ways to incorporate a half-story in this and there are some interesting things about this approach, all of which I think could be worked on further. Although I do think when you look at, you know, in some cases, if you look at the elevation versus the rendering, it's, Peter, if you wouldn't mind going back to Scheme B. When I look at this, I mean, I appreciate the work that's been done to try to make this building fit and the bringing of the roof line down to what looks like predominantly a second floor, but, and maybe it's just more design work is needed, but it looks like those second and third floors in the front of the building are squeezed, to my eye, uncomfortably close. I don't know if that really works. And again, the end result, which the previous direction was lose the fourth floor, you know, we're still looking at a fourth floor. I do think that any of these buildings, these design approaches, there are three interesting and valid approaches, if they were taken down a store, you would have quite a good building without that fourth floor. And squeezing that extra floor in this building also, I think the, again, the attempt to make it look like a two-and-a-half-story building with a few things on top, I feel like the, I understand, Peter, that you did this quickly, but, you know, the sort of the third floor under that overhanging roof, these things look very squeezed in in an attempt to minimize the height of the building. And I don't know how practical or pragmatic or how they'd feel as units. And even going back to Scheme A, which was the original concept for this site of the kind of the triple gable, sort of reminiscent in a way of the SS Pierce Building with its three mansards that wrap around the corner, with the attempt to sort of minimize the projections through the roof here, you know, I'm not, you know, these are units that have only sort of windows at an end and maybe some skylights. The attempt to squeeze units into this top floor, you know, I question how pleasant those units would be without creating more dormers and, you know, and making this building, you know, really seem like the four stories that it is. So I think it's a tough assignment to try to make that fourth floor disappear if it isn't going to disappear in fact.
Okay. Members of the planning board, Andy?
Unfortunately, I think this building is a lot less successful than the Highland. The reason being, I think we gave you clear direction last time. Last time when I asked you what the height of the Winslow was, you told me 45 feet and we told you that that was too tall, given that the highest elevation possible under this overlay district was 48 feet. That stepping down from 48 at the Pomona to 45 at the Winslow was not significant enough. And in fact, you've gone the wrong way. You're now at a 47-foot elevation on all of these schemes. Instead of reducing the roof height, you've elevated it. This building is going in the wrong direction. All three schemes. The last scheme, that one right there with that shallow pitch roof, looks like a box. Look at your 3D model of it. Go to the sketch. Look at that. It's got absolutely a box-like feel with the shallow roof, with this huge shed dormer forming the third and a half or fourth story. It just, quite frankly, it's not very sensitive or interesting. And it's too tall. It's 47 feet tall when the maximum allowable height in the district is 48. And you're saying that you're stepping down to Williston?
I'm saying this, I think if you read the right-hand side, you see that...
No, I understand that, but...
But in fairness, that should be mentioned, don't you think?
Well, in this scheme, you do step down to Williston, but look at your left-hand notation, 47 feet.
Right. That's the definition of the height of the building.
Well, I understand. And in fact, the ridge is higher than 47 feet, isn't it? It's probably 50 feet because of the definition. It's just not what we're talking about, Peter. We were talking about, last time you said it was 45 to that point and we said bring it down. Instead, you go up and you do it in a way, and I agree completely with Steve, you do it in a way where you jam the second and third floor together where it looks cramped. The elevation looks absolutely squeezed in order to accomplish this and yet you're still at 47 feet.
I think, I think you're seeing the windows with the transoms and that gives you the feeling that it's cramped. I mean, these are...
Perhaps. But still, 47 feet is 47 feet, Peter. There's no...
Well, no, I'm not denying that that's 47. I wrote it myself. I'm saying that this is, this is how we're proposing to perhaps get a half-story in here in order to mass the building properly so that it starts at a two-story, goes to a three and then a three and a half.
I guess my reaction to this is that we've, we've taken an abstract concept from the zoning bylaw, which is that a half-story is 60% or less than the story beneath it. And we've turned it into the maxim that we want to live by. And what we're saying is basically, this should be a three-story building, period. There should be no fourth floor. No matter how you do the roof, no matter how you do the dormers, four floors is too tall on this part of the site. And I agree with Andy that I thought that we had been pretty clear about that last time.
I just want to make sure we're clear so no one gets any misunderstanding where we stood. You were clear that you were concerned about the height of the building and we were equally clear, I think, about the importance of the square footage represented by the half-story. And so I took the charge, in fact, and I think it was consistent with what was said, that we would come back and give you some reflection and some ideas as to what it would look like. So I see this as a continuation, certainly not in any fashion do I take it as somehow we have ignored what you said. What we rather took is, we are at that point where, as in anything you do, you end up at that point where somebody has to figure out where we're going to go. The square footage represented by that is critical to the development.
A couple of questions for your team. How many units in the various schemes in that fourth floor and how much parking do those units generate that have to be paid for in underground parking spaces?
It'd be about six units, depending on, you know, we haven't done unit mixes, so we'll call it six units. How many parking spaces would be required?
How many parking spaces would be allocated in your approach for those six units?
The overall, the overall parking is a matter for discussion for another time because we have kind of deferred the whole issue of parking and the ability of this board to waive parking requirements until we get there. So I'm not sure how to...
I guess, I guess the reason I bring it up is because there's a very direct relationship between the costs that the developer needs to recoup and the amount of expensive underground parking spaces that have to be constructed for every additional unit. And so, so even though we've tried to set up a discussion that divides up, divides up our conversation into logical units, there comes a time when the units of discussion are related to each other. And I just want to suggest, looking forward, that putting those extra units in has implications for the cost of the total development. And I, in the years that I've worked both sides of the fence with development and construction, it always raises a red flag to me when somebody says, these six units are absolutely do or die and if we can't have them, we're going to take our football and go home.
Well, it's part of the overall discussion that we had. It's a fair point. It's a point that, that we have spent time talking about internally because one of the things we talked about was no roof, three-story, no roof. We talked about that. And the desire to have the roof and be able to make a statement, the need to be able to recoup some of that. It's a fair point, but it's been reviewed, you know, by the developer. We've got an overall reduction in the size of the development, including this area, that works. And to some extent, we've had that give and take and I think we end up with a better development. Unfortunately, this is the last point of contention in order to proceed in some fashion. I think these reflect ways in which there can be an appropriate building that can have a half-story, that they can respond to the design concerns about feeling like it's smushed in in some fashion. We're not looking for the design to be approved in any fashion. We're looking for the ability, if there's going to be a roof there, to be able to put area within that roof for living that won't exceed your half-story requirements.
Okay. Other members of the board? Any other comments, thoughts? Okay. My feeling is all along, we've said that that should be a three-story building. And to me, there's no reason why you can't architecturally put on a gamble roof and, you know, make it look less imposing as a three-story building. I don't think we have to go up to avoid a flat roof. So would that be the direction of the board, that the Winslow remain not more than a three-story building?
I think that's the direction you were clear with last meeting on the Winslow.
Do we agree? I want to give them directions, what I'm trying to do. So if people don't agree, please...
I think we agreed to be open to your continued work on this site and I think, I think what you've heard is that we feel like it doesn't work. The effort to put a fourth story on this particular site has too much impact on Williston and too much impact on the people who back from Horn Road onto this site. And I think we wanted to be open to the possibility and I think we have been open, but having seen several different schemes, I at least am not persuaded that they work.
Okay. And, you know, we heard, we've heard from our peer review consultant, who I don't think disagreed with you, and my feeling is the same.
Well, I'll let the peer consultant speak for himself, okay, as to whether this, this issue relates more to, to what people's perception is as to the understanding, as to the amount of fourth floor level or whether it's a design level. If, when you say you're willing to continue to work with us, what I, with all due respect, don't hear is a willingness to work with regard to this building because you can't get a half-story in without making it taller. That's not going to work in any real fashion. And this is a really critical issue to get by for the developer. And often when you get to the point, people can say, why, what's 6,000 square feet? It can't be critical for a development. It ends up that it is at some point. And given how far we've come and all the changes that have been made to the plan, I'm having a hard time thinking that this is the reason why the development can't really move forward. I, I'm having a hard time thinking that this is the reason why the development can't really move forward.
Mr. Donahue, when, when Carl brought up the issue of parking, you said, "Well, you know, this is about bulk and mass," and that's a tangential issue. So are economics. Economics is completely tangential to bulk and mass. We're not talking about your economics. We're talking about bulk and mass. And what we have said about bulk and mass very consistently for a long time, many, many times, is that we don't want three, four-story buildings on this site. We have said that repeatedly, consistently, without variation. And I want to take the, the, the half-story completely off the table. If I were voting, I'd say, "Completely off the table." I'm not voting, but I'm, I'm just giving you my opinion. But we've been very, very consistent. If you and your team are not hearing that, then please review this tape. Because we're being extremely clear, and we've said it before in other meetings. No, we don't want three buildings that have four stories. The Highland, we gave in on because of the lay of the land. The Pomona was the one that was supposed to have four stories. The Winslow is not going to have four stories. I think, I don't know. I mean, I'll let the planning board decide, obviously.
Okay. I, I think we have to draw a line in the sand on the Winslow. And, and it, it remains a three-story building.
The, the unambiguous direction is helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
But, but it does come with consequences. You know, I, I don't want this board to leave this evening in any fashion thinking that the developer is able to proceed with the development with that site plan, which compares to this site plan that you saw in January. And as we all know, developments live at the ground floor level. They don't live on the fourth floor levels. In thinking that we're just going to be able to continue in that fashion. I see that site plan as a site plan that works for everyone at this point. This, go ahead, I'm going to interrupt.
You know, that is the parking lot. It's a municipal lot. It's currently not zoned for any development. It's been vacant for the forty years that I've lived in Belmont. It's been used as a parking lot. And that prop, that parking lot is being bought by the developer for eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And with that parking lot, the developer is getting a discontinuance of a hundred-and-fifty feet of Horn Road. To tell me, how many units, Peter? Thirty, forty units? On an eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar lot is a killer if you don't get six more units. I find that hard to believe. And if that's the case, then maybe the developer should walk away from the parking lot, and we can talk about the remaining two lots. That lot is gravy to this development. It's gravy to this development, okay?
There is, with, with all due respect, there is no benefit to going down the road with anybody suggesting that my client is getting gravy for buying something that the town's decided to move forward with. Mr. Rojas was absolutely right. The economics aren't the issue. That's, that's my guy's problem, okay? You were candid. You were clear. I wanted to be as candid and as clear so there wouldn't be any confusion about what happens from this point forward. At that point. If there's no movement, which there appears to be no movement with regard to the Winslow, which is the last issue, then there's no movement.
Okay, but that does not mean that we need to put additional units on the Pomona or additional units on the Highland.
You've already said you won't do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I, I think we've worked through all the issues to get to one.
Okay.
We have one. We're, we're doing our best in every fashion possible.
And very appreciated. You've, you've been working with us.
You don't have to tell me that.
Yes.
But we're, we're doing our best to try to convince you that what we want to do with the Winslow, which will let us proceed, can be done in an appropriate fashion. I know it's not exactly what you want. I know that, okay? I know that. I know that because of the history and everything else. It's not economics, but it's, it's the reality that needs to be expressed. It's what the developer says he has to go forward with to get that site plan compared to all these blocks that we started with in January.
Agreed.
And to end up with those buildings that we've been talking about now for two nights instead of five-story buildings that we started with. We've made a lot of progress.
I agree. But I think you're also hearing that if the, the planning board is not willing to approve a three and a half or four-story building on the Winslow, at least two members have voiced that sentiment. So what I would do is let us move to the Pomona now, because-
The, the Pomona is relatively simple. I mean, we, we-
Mr. Donahue, you, you said that, that the third and, or the, the fourth story on the Winslow was the last remaining issue. And, you know, with all due respect, it's not. The setback of the Pomona on Horn Road is another issue. Again, we offered you clear direction there about the setback line related to the residential setback line that's established with pre-existing buildings. And yet, your current scheme, and I'll let you move on to it, I'll let Peter move on to it, but the current scheme still projects beyond that setback line. And, you know, I don't think that the direction that was very clearly made at the last meeting about where that line should be and how the building should step back from there was followed. So to say that the last remaining issue is the Winslow and to paint that as, you know, what's the stumbling block, no, there's still others. I mean, this, this still shows your dumpster, your service bay, and your entry vestibule projecting beyond the setback line.
Thank you for highlighting that. Let, let me amplify what I said in my opening comments. You, you did give very clear indication as to what you thought was the appropriate setback. And more, more of a benefit to the, the development team, you gave an indication as to what you were trying to achieve, how you were trying to achieve an entry plaza, open space along the Horn Road, side of the Pomona, and make sure that light came through when there'd be an opening there. We're prepared to do that. We're prepared to meet that line that you can see through there and do that. In designing it and looking at what the other issues, which we've talked about, which included the view corridor, it, it appeared to us that there might be some room to talk about achieving the goals that you wanted to achieve with those encroachments that you see there. I don't put them in the same category because if the board, after considering this, says, "No, we still think it's better to stay at that line," we're prepared to do that. The reason I don't treat it the same is we're not necessarily prepared to proceed without the half-story of the Winslow. When I say it's the only issue, it's the only issue that basically from the developer's viewpoint, regardless, if the board doesn't want to talk about this, that's fine. We won't talk about it. We'll, we'll do what you told us to do, which was move it back to the visual line, take it up from that level, first level, second level, move it back a significant amount, take it up to the third and fourth. We'll do that. That's fine. We thought this would work, be a win-win.
Okay, now, now, it would be two stories and then setback like we had-
Let me ask Pete. Pete will just wrap it up.
With the instructions that were given by the board, I wanted to take a look at what this actually means in terms of what kind of open space it creates. So if you follow these lines here, this first dashed line is the setback of the houses on Horn Road. It's about fifteen feet. The second setback is another eight feet, which was described by the board as desirable for the upper levels. What I've done here is actually to pull this bay, these bays out for the loading dock area. This is all enclosed, has a garage door. Because it seemed to make more sense not to make a big space in front of this. And of course, this does not go up to four stories. This only goes up a, a couple of stories. It steps back right away. But the idea was to really create spaces beyond it, and in particular, create a larger entry plaza where we've actually stepped back fully to that fifteen-foot line at this level. So we have a twenty-one foot-six entry plaza at its narrowest point. Most of it's twenty-four, twenty-five feet. The projection here is just one story to indicate that there is a, an entry. If people come around this block, it seemed to be a reasonable idea to have a little bit of a mass with doorways and glass on it to indicate that this is an entry into a major retail space. We wanted to draw people down. By pushing that all the way back in, you lose that effect. So this is just a very quick 3D to show how those spaces work. So this is, this is that entry area that I just mentioned. To give it more significance, we did project a bay forward with a roof deck, and then it steps back again. Further back here, this is that loading dock that steps back and then steps back again. And I think you can see in relationship to the houses, these are, these are ways to actually work with the, the houses and modulate this facade a little bit so that it doesn't look so monolithic. In addition to that, as you go up, well, first I just want to say one other thing. What we tried to do, and Eric was talking about this before, was not to erode this corner right at the entry to Horn Road. Eric has stepped this back here a little bit, and then we, of course, we've had a lot of discussion about how much this gets pushed back. But given the Pomona as a significant building, what we were trying to do was to maintain that corner. Again, as the attorney said, if we had to, we'll push it back. But it seemed to make sense to have more mass here because it relates to the whole common street facade that we have. And then, as the building goes up, you can see, I'm sorry that these are a little small, but if you look, these are the same two lines here. We've, at the second level, we've maintained the fifteen feet, maintained the fifteen feet. We've almost reached the fifteen feet here at the second level. And then the third level, we're back much farther, that additional eight feet, except for in the front. And that's this area right here.
Okay. I will cut it short, and I will take the risk of speaking for the board. I think that open space in that area, particularly where you have a tunnel of, of two relatively large buildings, is very important. So I would say, go back to the icon depiction, okay? Back to the line of the residence, residential. And you can go two feet, and then you setback adequately, and, and you can go up to four feet, which is, I think, what we had depicted. Two, two stories, excuse me, not feet, two stories, and then, and then up, four stories. So, so there will be no movement on this issue.
Even consider the idea of having, you know, an entry pushed out a little bit in order to create a vestibule? I mean-
Maybe, maybe an appropriate compromise might be that you'll be open to the idea of a vestibule, given the size of the retail tenant that's going to occupy the space.
And, and also how far it comes out. I mean, if you're talking about, you know, one or two feet beyond the line, maybe the board would be open to that. That's more of a design issue. But if you're five, six feet out, that's way too far.
Well, right now, we have space in front of that entry of thirteen and a half feet, which is a very wide side.
We're done. Right. Right. Okay. It's eight feet? Is that what the projection is?
Well, it looks like it's about eight feet, yeah. About, about eight feet.
That's too far.
I'd like to hear from Steve, if we can, on this. But my sense is that the, moving the garage forward, the loading bay forward makes a lot of sense because otherwise, you're going to have a, an area that's unused as a driveway accessing the overhead door. This pushes it out. It gives you better room to do the storage and the, the dumpster within that space and limits the area in front that's designated as storage, as, as the loading bay. The spaces that Peter has created are actually very good. If you do one monolithic plaza left, you know, front to back as a diagonal, it, architecturally, it does-
But Eric, again, now you're telling me, again, the only way we can get architectural is to go up and go out. There's no reason why you can't match that line and have the entrance begin at that setback line and push the building back. Again, you're telling me the only way we're going to get proper architecture is to make it bigger. And I'm telling you, the board is not buying that argument anymore, okay? So you, you, you want that entrance area to project out? Pull the building back further. This is open space for the residents of Belmont, okay? And, 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 yes, please.
The other thing, Eric, to your point about that area in front of the, yeah, of that, is you're showing it as asphalt. There's absolutely no reason why it can't be like the entrance to the garage and be a continuation of the pedestrian pavement. So therefore, if that garage door is closed most of the time, which is what you're saying, it's pedestrian open space. It's, it shouldn't be roadway. It should not appear like roadway. It should appear like just the rest of that pedestrian open space. And therefore, that whole argument about, "Oh, this is wasted," it's not wasted. It's not wasted at all. That's one thing. The other thing is, is you could modulate that facade the same way you've done it. I agree with Sammy a hundred percent. If, if you really want to do that, you could modulate it, but starting at the setback line to the houses, and then modulate it, if that's what you want. We'll let Steve weigh in. I mean, I think Steve-
Well, I, I think I'd probably make the same point as far as what Andy just said. The, there's no reason to make the loading dock entry feel like a, an industrial driveway because it's only going to be used intermittently versus the garage, which will be used all the time. So, and I, I don't think you're being asked to give up more than a couple hundred square feet by respecting that setback line. And you can still articulate the front of the building as it moves along that diagonal. So, you know, I don't think this is worth drawing a line in the sand beyond the, the setback line. I mean, Sammy said, "If you want the vestibule to project a foot or two, okay." But, and you, I think you were trying to make use of the upper of the roof of that vestibule as a deck. That still makes sense, but, you know, don't project the residential space above it as much, so you still maintain a deck. But I, I'm not going to disagree with what Sammy and Andy have said about respecting that line and why.
As I said, we, we thought it was worthy of discussion. Presented it to you. We're willing to live with the setback that, that's been created. So with regard to that line in the sand, we're on the right side of the line.
Okay, excellent. Then I think we've got clear direction on the Winslow. I think we've got clear direction on the Pomona. I think we're going to look at ways of further mitigating the bulk on the Highland. And Eric will work with, with Steve on that, and you have gotten some direction in that regard as well. What I would ask you to do is, we are July ten. You know, if you can have something, say by the first week of August, that we can start posting online because, you know, I think it's frustrating for people even to look at it two, three, four days, a week in advance and try to digest it. This is something people have to live with, you know, for a few weeks to kind of get used to it. It's, it's a big change for the square. It's going to be a positive change for the square. So taking into Carl's suggestion, if you can try to have something available for posting by the first week of August, then, then that'll give residents a month to look at it, and it's, it's a date to shoot for.
Can I just add something? I just wanted to pick up on something that Carl was talking about earlier with respect to parking. You know, we haven't talked very much at all about the garage, you know, what sits underneath this whole site. Carl was asking whether the additional six units, you know, created the need for more parking. I think if you go back to the scheme that was on the table in January, where there were something like a hundred-and-forty units and enough parking to meet that entire program per the current bylaw, including maintaining the fifty spaces that are in the current public lot. I don't know where we're going to end up with the total unit count, but it's going to be significantly less than a hundred-and-forty. We've also, in the evolution of this design, simplified things and probably reduced costs in some areas. We've got rid of a second driveway to the garage and made the garage circulation work better. There may be more parking in the garage now than is necessary, or there's parking that is more available to retail users and not needed for residential. So overall, I don't think, you know, I, I think there may be ways to make this project work more efficiently even at this reduced scale because the underground parking, which is expensive, can be reduced, made more efficient, and not, not provide excessive parking. So, I mean, we haven't looked at that at all. I don't think the garage, the garage plans were modified to eliminate the second driveway and to allow for continuous circulation, but they probably still need to be looked at again and, you know, tightened to meet the current program.
I, with regard to your, your request on scheduling, I think what we can commit to is this. to is this. I, I think we're there on the Pomona. Everything I heard in the Highland would suggest we're going to get there. We are far apart on, on a relatively small issue on the Winslow. I would think that during the first week in August, we can let you know whether the developer is going to proceed with the development. And if, if he is in any fashion, give you a schedule, and if not, we'll give you a letter withdrawing the application.
Okay. Then our peer review consultant will not do any additional work on this until, until we receive your letter.
I, I would ask that, that no further work be done until...
Okay. Thank you. That said, assuming that we still have a project this fall, okay, do I hear a motion to continue to our next meeting, the public hearing, September 11th, 2012, at 7:00 PM? That would be our next meeting, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And any other business?
I would just, I would just like to thank the, the members of the community who have supported this process. We knew when we proposed this overlay bylaw that we were making work for ourselves, and we hoped that the town would find it worthwhile, and we still hope that, that you will feel, when we get to the end of this process, that, that we have responded to the point of view of the community and tried to strike a balance between the requirements of a good development and the character of the neighborhood.
Yes. Thank you. Well said. Okay. And do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a nice summer.